... by Mr. Johnson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Johnson as well.
Thank you. Ms. Bowelhead, please. Heavenly Father, we ask for your leadership and guidance in developing and formulating policies that will provide our students with paths and options to succeed in life. Please give us the wisdom and knowledge to inspire all of our students and the determination to provide an atmosphere for them to continue to dream in their pursuit of excellence. We pray in your name, amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Mathews, we have some special recognition?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Tonight, we are recognizing two employees who have earned recognition for our school system. In addition, we also have a representative here from Relay for Life who will also be making a recognition presentation. First, I'd like to ask Ms. Donna Wands to come forward. Ms. Wands is an English language learners teacher at West Newton Elementary School. She recently received the Eeeng Unsung Heroes Award for her program entitled "What's Cooking", which encourages her students to make healthy eating choices and help their parents in the kitchen. Along with the award came a $2,000 grant to fund her program. ELL students in her class learn how to prepare simple nutritious meals that can be eaten at different times by every member of the family. Her students also prepare meals for a local homeless shelter as a way of helping their community. Along the way, her ELL students learn numerous math and reading skills and also add to their vocabulary as they continue to learn English as their second language. Ms. Wands is using her $2,000 grant to purchase cooking equipment, tools, materials, consumables for the children to use in her class. Her project was selected for more than 1,400 projects nationwide to receive this grant. Congratulations on your award, Ms. Wands. (applause). Mr. Chairman, next, I'd like to call on Mr. Evan Williams to come forward. Mr. Williams is a science teacher at Newton High School who was recognized by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, for his work in the field of epidemiology. Mr. Williams has been a consultant for the Centers for Disease Control for more than 15 years and has assisted the CDC in the development of several teaching models and curriculums, including EXITE, a teaching model for teaching epidemiological case studies, and FLUE EXIT, an integrated curriculum across several subject areas that teaches students the importance of flu prevention. He also recently designed a framework and curriculum in epidemiology for the Georgia Department of Education, and as a result of his work, the state of Georgia will be the first state in the nation to offer an epidemiology class in public schools for credit.
Wow.
And that class is right here in Newton County. An Evan Williams classroom at Newton High School. As a result of his outstanding work, the CDC presented Mr. Williams with an award recognizing his leadership as a pioneer in promoting the teaching of epidemiology and public health sciences to high school students in Georgia and throughout the United States. To have one of our teachers recognized by the CDC in this fashion is truly an honor for Newton High School and Newton County schools, although I think we would all agree that the real winners are the students in Mr. Williams's classroom. Mr. Williams, we thank you for your commitment to our students, and we congratulate you on this tremendous recognition.
(applause).
I do see as administrators in the office, Mr. Turner. Principal Craig Lockhart is here and his assistant principal as well, so thank you very much.
Okay. We don't have any...
There's another one?
The Relay for Life.
Relay for Life.
Oh, here it is. Thank you very much. Finally tonight, Mr. Chairman and board members, I'd like to call on Kristy Lyons, who is here tonight, representing Newton County Relay for Life. Ms. Lyons is here to make a presentation to our school system.
My name is Kristy Lyons, and this is my fellow Newton County Relay for Life committee member, Chris Ochs. We wanted to take this opportunity to thank our board members, administration, and our community for their continued support with our Newton County Relay for Life. With the efforts of our staff, teachers, our county has been given the honor of 100%
Bye, Sandra, thanks.[329.12][329.12](laughter). New Nice School Assistant Principal.
Okay, we have no public participation.
school participation for the state of Georgia. Not every county received this award, and I was very proud to have received it for our county. The Newton County School System was responsible for 41% of Newton County's $233,731 total
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Meadows, second.
for 2011.
Second.
To me, that's very impressive.
Second, Ms. Cargan, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same motion carries.
The American Cancer Society also has rewarded each of the schools with cases of paper based
Approval of the minutes, please.
upon fundraising amounts.
You need a motion?
I was excited when May was going to receive theirs.
Yes.
Paper is his cherished golden article.
So long.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, do I have a second?
It was well appreciated.
Second.
At this time, I would like to call on Dr. Matthews and Mr. Turner so we can present
Second by Mr. Meadows, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same motion carries. Superintendent's report, Dr. Carpenter?
you with the award.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Without their assistance and backing us up, our efforts would not be possible, so we
We'll begin with our financial report. You have linked to your agenda our general fund financial report for the month ending
thank you very much.
October 31st, 2011, showing that we are a third of the way through the fiscal year, so we are a third of the way through our year. Total revenues are 39.33% and total expenditures 34.04%. Keep it in mind that we have expense salaries and benefit accrues through this coming July and August, and that's a good thing. In addition, our expenditures are slightly up as we've explained for the last couple of years that we're forward funding some of the state health insurance premiums, and we did that last year, and the state's asking us to do the same thing this year. It is also important to note that the general fund budget has been adjusted to reflect a $750,000 decrease in the M&amp;O budget and an addition of $822,000 to cover the cost for the additional two days pay for our employees as approved at the October 10th special meeting. So those adjustments have been made. Our tax collections are better than they were this time last year with 52.49% collected versus 44.72% collected on this same date and time last year, so that's, too, is a good thing. On a final note, open enrollment for health insurance benefit began on October 1st. It was scheduled to end tomorrow, but they've extended that deadline through the 16th due to some technical issues on state health side. So our employees now have until the 16th of November to complete that process. Any questions about our financials? Okay, we'll move on to our operations report. I'd like to bring a little bit of attention to a few items. Business and finance, the Newton County School System SPOLS III distribution is $894,884, a decrease of $12,554 from our August collection. Total SPOLS III revenues for the first 21 months is approximately $17,746,453, and that's averaging $845,69 per month. Although we had a decrease this month, we're still doing good with SPOLS III when you compare it to SPOLS II, where our average was $830,490 per month. So that's going, SPOLS is going well. Maintenance and operations, you'll look at item number two, the maintenance department continues to build a database of our energy costs. Ms. Loomis and Mr. Smith are doing a lot of work in that area, and we're making adjustments to our temperature settings, and we want to be able to bring that information to the school board once we have some good data based on several months, but we can tell you now that we're affecting some savings via this process. Project meetings, under capital projects, for our Newton College and Career Academy, the last one was held on last Wednesday, and that project's about 70% complete, and weekly project meetings will continue to be held from this point forward. We have one scheduled for tomorrow at 1:00, and we'll be in there looking at that project and where it is. I plan to have Mr. Moore here on next week, and we'll have a short presentation on the Career Academy and talk about where we are in terms of being ready for a January 4th opening. So we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail, and that'll be based on what we hear from the contractor on tomorrow. So Moore's coming in that area next week. Under transportation, the fleet card system has been installed and it's fully operational. Drivers are now beginning to utilize the system, and once we've collected enough information, we'll begin talking with McPherson and talking about who needs to be using fuel card, who needs to be coming to the service center, so we're in the process now of gathering that data to try and affect the type of savings we said that this program would affect. But drivers are using the cars, that's important to note. Our nutrition program, I always want to pay attention to our Meal Pay Plus program. It continues to pay for itself. Revenues through October 2011 are $210,102.99, and that was $42,757.53 more than this same time period in 2010. That's an increase of about 25.6%. Any questions from our operations report?
Any questions?
And just a side note, I know I coined the phrase "warm feeling" some months ago.[650.16][650.16](laughter). So I want to know, should I put on a coat or what?[656.16][656.16](laughter).
It's about 60 or 59 degrees outside, Mr. Johnson. I left my coat today, but it was not intentional. I really should have had it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item B, curriculum, Dr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman and board members, I present to you the curriculum instruction report for the month of November. We have a lot of wonderful things going on in our Newton County schools in the area of curriculum instruction and technology. I'm going to just highlight a few of these. Under our research-based instruction and building background knowledge, our counselors meet on a monthly basis for professional learning, and at their last session over at Georgia Perimeter College, Stephanie Easterling from the Georgia Student Finance Commission, Georgia College 401, you may be familiar with it under that name, gave a presentation on the bridge legislation, which is preparation of our students, beginning in lower grades in middle school, and she also talked some about elementary school, preparation of those students to enter college and career pathways. So we certainly are very in tune to that, especially as our AYP determinations are moving, seem to be moving in that direction, trying to give our counselors a heads up and a leg up on that. Dr. Dan Mulligan led workshops back in early October for teachers to further their knowledge of the use of interactive notebooks and mathematics. Many teachers reported to us that the information was very helpful in helping them clarify some of their misconceptions regarding implementation and to further that implementation in their classrooms. Our Newton County Special Education Department is always hard at work, and they are continuing their participation in the GLRS math project. Some of you may know that as Alex, and that's ongoing work in many of our elementary and middle schools, led by Mary Elizabeth Mindenhall, who's a math consultant there. Last year, students who participated in this math project with fidelity showed great gains in their math achievement. We just had a principal in today from Flint Hill talking with us about the gains that her students, when they were at Palmer Stone, experienced using the Alex program. Under technology integration, actually ran into one of our board members, Ms. Baker over at the Promethean Active Bus in the Sharp...
And they were making a list.
Yeah, we were.[830.12][830.12](laughter) Over in the Sharp parking lot on November 1st, it's part of Promethean's educational outreach program. We had a lot of parents and community leaders stop in that day to take a look at the newest and greatest technologies on display there, many of which we have in our school district, so we're very proud of that. On the support activities, under the next section there, October FTE count is always an important day for us, on October 4th. All schools were required to submit information for this data collection effort, and of course, student services worked with our registrars and clerks to assist them in getting all of our FTE data entered and signed off on later in the month of October. Georgia Work Ready Assessment was also given during the month of October, and we had about 95% of all of our seniors participate in that assessment. Dr. Skinner worked closely with our high school testing coordinators to get this administered, and the Georgia Work Ready Assessment gauges students' core skills in the areas of applied mathematics, reading for information, and locating information. Based on their score, students may receive a Work Ready Certificate that verifies their skill level to potential employees and demonstrates a commitment to success. So we're very happy about the percentage of participation we had in that particular assessment. Artwork is on display, as always, on the second floor. There's some really wonderful pieces out there this month from Clements Middle School and also from Herd Mixon Elementary School. Ms. Fury is working very closely with a member of our Georgia Honors Program Selection Committee at each school to identify students for this program, and then, of course, they'll move on for interviews and perhaps participation in one of the Governor's Honors areas of concentration. Our after-school program continues to be very successful, with approximately 413 students enrolled in the 21st Century Program, while we have about 590 enrolled in the tuition-based after-school enrichment program. You can actually see a picture on the front there of students in the after-school program at Newton High School participating in a service learning project to help restore wetlands. So not only is after-school alive and well in our elementary schools, but it's also very much a part of high schools and middle schools this year. The new curriculum lab for special education staff is now open over at Palmer Stone. I'm very proud of this, as our teachers have a place to go and assemble, do make and take kinds of activities to be able to take back and use in their classroom. Our special ed instructional coaches are also there to help those teachers a couple of times each week until 6:00 PM. So that is a new addition to our special education efforts here in Newton County. On October 27th, there were 484 personally-owned computing devices being used on the guest network in our school district, and you know, we are undergoing the Bring Your Own Technology and use of the guest network, which enables folks to use their own technology with some guidelines and guidance and filtering via our guest network. And then, on page 20 there, Mr. Woodard is, I mean, on number 20, Mr. Woodard is quickly preparing on December 8th for the annual event of the Work-Based Learning and Youth Apprenticeship Program, the Aspiring Young Professionals Banquet, and many of you, some of you as board members, have participated in that in the past, and I know he is looking for volunteers to help, again, with our students through their networking and business dinner, completing a short evaluation of the student's performance when they come to participate in that event. So that is, Mr. Chairman, our curriculum instructional technology report. Are there any questions?
I have one, Dr. Carpenter.
Yes, sir.
Out of 17, maybe, I don't know if he answered that, but it can be five. Are we geared up technically to handle any increase on the wireless network as a result of the personally-owned computer devices?
I believe so. I'll let Dr. Shattuck respond to that a little more than probably I can, but I know we've piloted that at Eastside.
Correct.
And they certainly are geared up to handle that.
Yes. All the schools, except for three, no, except for five, have wireless in their building, and they're all running G, except for Flynn Hill, which is running the N-technology, wireless technology. Those five that do not have wireless now were part of those ones that you all voted to have those renovated, and they will have wireless before the start of next school year. Okay. Thank you, Colin. Thank you. Dr. Mathews?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Given some of the discussion that the board has had in the past at this table, we are now looking to feature, at least once a month, some programmatic initiative of our school system, so you can hear from our principals and our teachers or others in the field as to the work that's going on in our schools. And as the board well knows, we have a strategic framework in the Newton County schools that has a district-level emphasis and a school-based emphasis. At the district level, just as a reminder, we've done lots of work here in the last year and a half, especially, on research-based instructional strategies, building background knowledge for academic achievement on the part of our students, and technology integration. And those things are sort of seamless, and they're very connected to each other, so they're not separate distinct things. They're really a strategy in the classroom that really brings together pieces that matter for children in their learning. On the school-based side of the ledger, in terms of strategy, as we've built the capacity of teachers and continue to do that in terms of our strategies that are research-based and classroom instruction, building background knowledge and technology, is an emphasis on professional learning communities. So without further ado, recently, Principal Renee Mallard at Indian Creek Middle, her assistant principal, Mr. Jim Minigusa, were presenters at Griffin Risa. They were asked to present their version of professional learning communities, and their version is very much the Newton County version. So to let you have an insight into what's happening in our schools with PLCs, Principal Mallard and Assistant Principal Minigusa, it's all yours.
We were asked, and we presented last week, hence the Griffin Risa and the date there under our names, but we talked about leadership and professional learning communities in our schools, and this has been a process that Indian Creek has been working through and working on over the past couple of years. First thing we want to do is just talk about what professional learning communities are so you understand some of the background knowledge on that, and then we're going to share what we're doing at Indian Creek. As the principal, I talk about instructional practices, and I talk about data and analyzing the data, and Mr. Miniguso, as assistant principal of instruction, focuses on best practices and incorporates those into our professional learning sessions. So for background information, this is just to give you the concept of a PLC and how they're built into school settings, and we are middle school, so our planning time is very strategically helpful in this manner because the teachers have about 80 minutes of planning time each day, so that helps when we're scheduling PLCs. Professional learning community, and a professional is someone with expertise in specialized fields. Learning is an ongoing action, perpetual curiosity, and community is a group linked by common interest. So that's, in a nutshell, what a professional learning community is. Characteristics is that they have a focus on learning, it's a collaborative culture, there's collective inquiry, they're action-oriented, there's a commitment to continuous improvement, the results orientation, did they learn it? That's something we always have to ask ourselves, and the administrator has assurances, and there are teacher commitments. And again, there should be a shared mission, vision, values, and goals of a professional learning community. Collaborative teams are a component. The collective inquiry into best practices and what our current reality is, and current reality is the areas of strengths and potential areas of focus, and we'll talk about Indian Creek's feedback on those two components. They're action-oriented, there's a commitment to continuous improvement, and again, result orientation. And this is from Dufour, and Dufour and Dufour are two people that are well-known for their work in professional learning communities. Conditions and structures necessary to support PLCs. They don't just happen on their own. You actually have to work at starting them and continuing their growth and supporting them. The school leadership has to support this vision. You want them to become autonomous, where we know that a PLC is going on even if we're not there in the room with the teachers, and that's one of our goals. The teachers need time to plan and analyze the data and what they're working on. There's also professional development opportunities. We need to provide resources. Sometimes teachers don't feel like they have time to do everything that they're asked to do, and that's something where you have to schedule time in for PLCs. And you also need to train them. What do we mean by a PLC? What are you expected to do? What do you think you should get out of a PLC? And that is part of the process. How do they impact students? Everything that we do at school should be for the greater good of the students, and so what does having a PLC do for our kids at Indian Creek? And when we talk about working together, the discourse is there, the goal is in continuous improvement, we're raising the expectations and the standards for all of the students, those are all things that collectively, if the teachers work together and analyze their progress and their successes, then we can have a better education for our kids. The studies indicate that students tend to be engaged in learning at high intellectual levels when the adults are engaged. We all know that if they're in a positive school environment, it positively affects the children that are at that school, and that's what we're working towards, and we want a shared vision for student success. When you put it all together, professional learning communities, when the educators create an environment that fosters mutual cooperation, emotional support, and personal growth as they work together to achieve what they cannot accomplish alone. And one of the things that we talk about at Indian Creek is the work that we did to move off of the needs improvement list and making AYP two years in a row. That was something that we would not have been able to accomplish if the whole entire staff did not work together and come together as a unit. That wouldn't have been something we'd be able to do. What's the point of a PLC? You're creating common language and framework. You're facilitating a data-driven process. This isn't something that is casual. If you want the best results from a PLC, then it needs to be organized, and it needs to have a focus. And it creates a culture and a vehicle for collaboration to share expertise and the best practices. So what you're doing is you're talking about what is working in your schools. Collaboration, again, working together interdependently and analyzing the impact of professional practices. Dufour, Dufour, and Eeckra, and again, those are well-known professional learning gurus, as you say. Basic understandings of a collaborative team. We're going to spend some time talking about teams. Group of people working together to achieve a common goal. And the more complete definition, working interdependently toward the common goal for which they're all mutually accountable. We have independent senses of accountability with our student scores, but this is where we're all in this together, and that's the feeling that you want to foster in your building. Examples of team norms. Positive tones are used at meetings. No complaining unless suggestion for a solution is offered as well. Beginning and ending the meeting on time. Everyone contributes equally. Listens respectfully and considers another perspective. In order for groups of people to work together and work as a team, there has to be some sense of expectation, and you have to establish these. When you think about working with kids in your classroom, you set up how you want them to do certain jobs within their small groups, and we facilitate that, only we're working with teachers instead. The prerequisites for creating these collaborative teams, this is where the leadership component comes in. It's our job as administrators to help foster these, building that time into the school day and year, making sure that the teachers understand what they're working on, training and supporting their effectiveness, and then accepting responsibility to work... Collaboration, again, working together interdependently and analyzing the impact of professional practices. DuFour, DuFour, and Iker, and again, those are well-known professional learning gurus, as you say. Basic understandings of a collaborative team. We're going to spend some time talking about teams. Group of people working together to achieve a common goal. And the more complete definition, working interdependently toward the common, common goal for which they're all mutually accountable. We have independent senses of accountability with our student scores, but this is where we're all in this together, and that's the feeling that you want to foster in your building. Examples of team norms. Positive tones are used at meetings. No complaining unless suggestion for a solution is offered as well. Beginning and ending the meeting on time. Everyone contributes equally. Listens respectfully and considers another perspective. In order for groups of people to work together and work as a team, there has to be some sense of expectation, and you have to establish these. When you think about working with kids in your classroom, you set up how you want them to do certain jobs within their small groups, and it's, we facilitate that, only we're working with teachers instead. The prerequisites for creating these collaborative teams. This is where the leadership component comes in. It's our job as administrators to help foster these, building that time into the school day and year, making sure that the teachers understand what they're working on, training and supporting their effectiveness, and then accepting responsibility to work together as true professional colleagues. And you've heard Dr. Matthews talk about Mike Schmoker, and you've talked, and we've talked about the fact that we don't work in isolation and we can't work in isolation anymore in order to be successful. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Miniguso.
So what are some advantages of having a collaborative team? Well, we already discussed tonight how working in collaboration means that you can get more done than working individually. But it's also been proven through research that as working in collaborative teams and professional learning communities, you have gains in student achievement, you have higher quality solutions to your problems. Teachers are able to support each other through working through their strengths and weaknesses. Creativity comes into play because usually in a group atmosphere, there's the ability to get out your ideas and talk about your ideas versus if you were just sheltered and doing your own thing, and then able to share those ideas at work, and those ideas get spread throughout the learning community and are used in a positive manner. What are some keys to effective teams? We've got to have the time for collaboration built in the school day, which we have worked on very hard over our last couple of years to make sure that our teachers are having that time and using that time wisely. You have to have some focus in what you're doing while, while meeting. So we require agendas during our meeting times. We also require minutes that we have them turn in to us to ensure that there is that focus going on and we're working on the right work and doing, and doing the right things in those, in those meetings. And then Dr. Mallard talked about your norms and those help to guide the collaboration process. Teams pursue specific and measurable performance goals. I mean, I think everybody can relate to when you're goal-setting. It doesn't hold any purpose unless your goals are very specific, you know what you're going after, but they're also attainable. If you don't have attainable goals, then you're really not going to work very hard towards reaching those goals, so. Here are some behaviors that you could say that maybe occur while you're trying to form professional learning communities. One is called forming. It's when a team first forms, team members are hesitant participants, keep it to the sidelines, waiting to look for direction. So that's when you've got to come in and use the same approach you want your teachers to do in the classroom, model. You want to be a modeler of what professional learning communities are, set the tone for what you're looking for with professional learning communities, and then guide them through the process until they're ready to take it on for themselves and be active participants instead of hesitant participants. These are some typical feelings you might have when you're forming PLCs. There's some excitement and anticipation, some pride going on, but then there's also these, a little bit suspicion, you know? Is this something, in, in education, I like to talk about, is this something that will pass? Do I, you know, do I just wait a couple of years and let it go and, and it's going to move on its way? And then of course, with everything that's new, there's always that fear and anxiety part of, is this going to work and, and will I succeed or will I fail? And here are some more typical forming behaviors that you work, that you work towards and can work through. The fourth bullet there, discussion is, is obviously a key point in working with professional learning communities, working through the issues that you have, informing them, working through the problems. And again, as we talked about in earlier slide, we, we at Indian Creek try very hard to make sure that if you have an issue, that's fine, but try to bring a solution with it and not just the issue itself, so we can work on a solution with it. Here's another one called storming. As team members begin to realize that work and commitment is expected from them, then it's normal to panic. In other words, it's not going to pass. It's not a fleeting thing. It's really here to stay, and we're also going to have some accountability with it. Well, now the pressure's on to actually perform and, and get some things done. So you might have some behaviors like resistance, I'm just not going to do it, frustration, I don't have enough time, I can't get it done. And then confusion about exactly what is my role in the professional learning community. You could be, have some defensiveness and unwillingness to compromise as other things. And then you work towards a norming attitude as team members get used to working together and they start to learn to trust each other, which is key, that trust factor, you know? Can I come into this professional learning community and know that I can share my ideas? And then that my ideas are going to be taken whether they work or not, but they're still going to be heard. And they begin to help each other stay afloat rather than actually competing with one another. Again, that's, all goes back to that key word, collaboration. These are some typical feelings when you start to get the norming process, you start accepting each other. Therefore, after that acceptance occurs, that trust starts to build up, and there's a belief that everything actually is going to be okay and this process is going to work and it's going to be beneficial for everyone, and most importantly, the students. And again, some more typical behaviors of that norming process. Equalized participation, I think that's crucial, making sure that everybody feels that they're important in the process. No one person is, is running the show, it's, it's a collaborative effort. And then hopefully after you've got that norming process done, now you're into performing. And what are you doing to get things done with your professional learning community? So now you have your team members establish trust, they better understand what's expected of them, they have become an effective decision-making unit, and everyone is working in concert collaboration together. Some feelings at, at the performing level, you have value that's actually placed on the work that's being done. Everybody understands each other's strengths and weaknesses. There's that trust factor that's become very level, very high level of trust, and a very committed, commitment to the task, and a pride in the work, and a pride in the results that come from the work. And again, some more performing behaviors. So how do you create that climate for teamwork? You have to build those relationships, relationships is key. We talked to the teachers about that, you know? Kids will learn more from you if you build that relationship with them. Well, it's the same for administrators and teachers. We have to build those relationships amongst, with us and the teachers, and the teachers have to build them amongst each other. And as you start to build those relationships, you build those teams and get that collegiality going together and working together towards a common goal. And then team members, it's okay to have some fun while you're at work. So in a nutshell, as Mr. DuFour says, "The most promising strategy for sustained substantive school improvement is developing the ability of school personnel to function as a professional learning community."
Now, you as members of the school board may have experienced some of those stages of team building and team forming, especially when you started out together as a new team. And every year, it's going to be different. If we move people from grade level to grade level or change a subject area, you might have to go through that process again. It's not static either, so there might be an occasion where something happens, there might be an issue with morale, and suddenly you feel like as administrators, we're starting all over again because they, the teachers are, are becoming resistant if something happens. So you have to understand that you, you go back and forth through those stages of working as a team together. Now, the purpose of the PLC, there's two ways to look at it. A lot of times, we've been, we've been talking about data, data, data with our PLCs, analyzing the data, making instructional changes based on the data, comparing our data to ourselves, past, other schools. And, and we have to remember that professional learning communities have a multitude of components that you can use them for. You can work on developing your mission visions and values. You can discuss and share strategies, so it's more than just analyzing your test results. You can talk about best practices. You can have book talks and do professional readings. And then you can talk about the norms and, and revising what you do with your PLC time. And we try to get feedback on our PLCs so that we can make them more productive for our teachers. In addition, on the data side, on the right side, you're using data to guide your decisions, you're developing common assessments, you're looking at student work, you're looking at teacher work, there's item analysis and error analysis, and then there's developing SMART goals. Now, the focus on learning is ultimately what all the PLCs, regardless of what's on the agenda that day. So it's the very essence of a learning community, and it's a commitment to the learning of each student. Three big ideas. The traditional school, and this is where we, we try to move away from the way we used to do things. The isolated teacher who just shuts their door and thinks that they do it the best way, and they don't want to share their ideas and no one else can help them. They're focused on beliefs or attitudes, the goals are unstated, and they focus on changing others and not changing themselves. And some of you may have worked with staff members that have done that before. Learning community, and there's a clarity of purpose, the focus is on learning, there's collaborative effort, and it's data-driven that focuses on results with timely feedback. One of the things that we've struggled with at Indian Creek is we've analyzed the data and looked at it, but we had trouble taking it to the next step. What were we actually changing in our instruction based on what we saw in our data? And that's something that we're, we're moving towards and we're on the right path. But that, that's been a challenge for the past couple of years of actually taking it to the next level after you look at your test results. Results-focused professional learning communities, again, these concepts, meaningful teamwork, clear measurable goals, and regular collection and analysis of performance data. And that's from Mike Schmoker. Now, when we originally did this presentation, we had a lot of slides that dealt with different types of assessment, and we're just going to quickly go through one or two assessment components, looking at what the evidence tells us and what does it mean we need to do. So what are our interventions? What are our prescriptive actions after we look at our data? Effective teachers will review the data, reflect on the data, organize ways to meet the diverse needs of the students, which means differentiating their instruction, engaging the students in their own learning processes. That's something where sometimes we, we don't take the time to sit down with the kids and say, what are your learning goals? This is how you did on the last benchmark test, or this is how you did on the STAR reading or STAR math test. How do you think you could do better? What's some of the things that maybe you can improve on? A lot of time is spent on looking at the kids based on numbers, and sometimes we forget that one-on-one component where we're talking to the kids about their own personal results. And if they're involved in their goal setting, then they might be more responsive and might be more successful. And then having the teachers reevaluate how they're teaching and how the students are learning and possibly creating new assessments. Balanced assessment programs, assessment of is summative assessments, it's norm reference like the ITBS and standardized, it's a snapshot in time. And your essential question is, what have students already learned? When we talk about assessment for, that's formative, it's teacher-made, it's a moving picture, and the essential question is, how can we help students learn more? Here's purposes for the two types of learning, summative of learning, and that's evaluating the competence or effectiveness of a program. Examples to help you sort students, gather grades, administer score and report. So it's very structured. Formative is for learning, it's part of the process, it helps parents and teachers determine where their students are, it's ongoing, and you use it to change and adjust your instruction, and you set goals then after you get your results. More examples, on the left side is all of the standardized tests, that's where all your, your bubbling in process happens there. And on the right, you have observations, questioning strategies, self and peer assessment, students writing journals, essays, lab reports. So it's much more hands-on and student-focused. And again, here's some more specific examples for summative and for formative. Why common assessments? We talked a little bit about this because we have CRCT test data and AYP reports, but sometimes they don't help us drive that day-to-day instruction or that unit instruction. And so we focus more on our common assessments, which give us assessment literacy, the teachers need to improve and develop their assessments, you raise expectations, you build team capacity. Collaborative teacher teams are able to identify and address problem areas in their programs, and there's a collective response. It helps teams and the students create a systematic intervention for students. When you're asking teachers to analyze their data in comparison with their colleague's data, they're, they're looking at, you know, what am I doing well? What are they doing well? Are they doing something better than I'm doing? Am I doing something really well? Am I feel validated? And all of that process comes from using common assessments because you're developing them throughout the year. Again, another quote from DuFour and Iker, our famous PLC people, "Relying on any one model would be a seriously flawed assessment strategy. Assessment of a student's work should provide a rich array of information on his or her progress and achievement. The challenge is to match appropriate assessment strategies to curricular goals and instructional methodologies." One of the things that we see is students who might have a bad day on testing and they get a low CRCT score. Can you imagine that child forever for the rest of the school year being locked into a particular class or a particular pathway if the teachers didn't do any other type of assessment? We have teachers who realize that kids are more capable in what their test score says, and they may make suggestions and make informed decisions because they see a different picture because we do more than just give them that standardized test and ignore everything else that we see during the school year. What are our assessment practices as a school? And these are questions that we ask our participants, how they assess student learning? Do you work with colleagues to create test questions? Do you analyze the results of your students' assessments? And again, this is the hard part, then what do you do with all of it? This was an activity that we had them complete where they looked at explaining what teachers do in common planning, how are assessments developed in your school, how are students identified for intervention? And the big picture is, how do you know? As administrators, we have to ask ourselves, how do we know all of this is going on? Ask parents, how do they know that teachers are looking at how well their students are performing? And I think that that's important. Now, this is where we focus on what we're doing with our own people at Indian Creek. We've got the faculty working in groups. We're working on grade-level curriculum teams to produce a common curriculum. There's common assessments, there's scheduled exams. So this is what any particular school can do, and these are things that we do as well. Weekly meeting times, this is non-negotiable, and requiring feedback and products by teams. As leaders, we know that a professional learning community is more likely sustained if the teachers participate in reflective dialogue, if they observe and react to one another's teaching, if they develop curriculum and assessments, if they work together, if they share lesson plans, collectively engage in problem-solving, action, research, and continuous improvement. There's no time for you to be on your own in any of this, and that's something that we all work together towards promoting.
So how do you analyze the results as a PLC? Well, there's different ways to do that. You can do an item-by-item comparison, you can look for the why, compare your questions to standard or to understand the level at which it's being tested. Or you can just share some successful strategies that are going on within each other's classrooms and brainstorm those strategies and the different activities that you're using to help assess your students' knowledge. Some SMART goals. We talked about SMART goals throughout this presentation, and PLCs often talk about SMART goals. So here's the definition of what SMART goals are. They have to be very specific and strategic, which we talked about. They have to be measurable and attainable. They have to be results-driven, and there has to be a time set on them. You've got to give yourself an actual time deadline of when you're going to accomplish these goals, otherwise you keep working and working and working and don't really feel like you've achieved anything or just kind of let it pass because you haven't really put a deadline on yourself. And here's a little more about what SMART goals are, explains it in a little bit more detail. And here's a worksheet that we gave out at the beginning of the year to talk about SMART goals and what SMART goals are, the types of things that we want to address within our professional learning communities. So you've got your strategies and actions, what are you going to actually do? Who's going to be responsible? What are the different responsibilities that are going to occur within the, within the professional learning community? Again, you've got to have your target date. When are these things going to occur? End of nine weeks, end of the four and a half weeks? And what's your evidence that these things have actually been effective? Becoming a professional learning community leadership-wise, you can have loose to tight leadership. Effective leaders don't simply encourage schools to go off and do whatever they want. They establish clear parameters and priorities that enable the schools to work within established boundaries in a creative and autonomous way. So you've got to walk the talk. Principals and other administrators need to model what they're asking their teachers to do. We kind of talked about that earlier. So we, we try as an administrative team at Indian Creek to work collaboratively with each other as well as with our teachers.